All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, November 28th, meeting of the Garden Grove City Council. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember O'Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Tran.
Here.
Councilmember Dovin.
Present.
Councilmember Klaffenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Wen Pinalosa.
Here.
Mayor Protem Bridigum.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. All righty. May I ask HR Director Laura Stover to lead us in the invocation, followed by Councilmember John O'Neal for the pledge?
Will everyone please stand and prepare yourself according to your faith? Dear God, we ask you for your wisdom to know the difference between what is right and what is popular. We also ask for your strength to act with conviction on what we know. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag and join me in pledging our allegiance to the greatest symbol of freedom in the world. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Maybe CD. Well, thank you.
All right. We are going to recess and go to Housing Authority. So I will hand it over to Chair Bridigum.
Okay. We will call the meeting of the Garden Grove Housing Authority to order. Please roll call. Please call roll. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Beckles.
Here.
Commissioner Dovin.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Klaffenstein.
Here.
Commissioner Tanwin.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Here.
Commissioner Tran.
Yeah.
Commissioner Wen Pinalosa.
Here.
And Chair Bridigum.
Here. Open up oral communications. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to the Garden Grove Housing Authority? Seeing no hands, we will close open oral communications and move on to consent. Entertain a motion?
I have something about ADU that I'd like to tell you.
No. I have a card for you on the City Council.
City Council one, right.
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and we have a second. Roll call vote.
Chair Bridigum.
Yes.
Vice Chair Wen Pinalosa.
Yes.
Commissioner Tran.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner Tanwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Klaffenstein.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Dovin.
Aye.
Commissioner Beckles. Motion received. Nine yes votes.
Any matters from commissioners?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, we will adjourn. The next regular meeting of the Garden Grove Housing Authority will be Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024. Back to the council.
All right. All righty. We will reconvene City Council. That takes us on to presentations. We do have one listed, item 1A.
Item 1A is a community spotlight in recognition of Colonial Carpet Company for being named the best place to buy carpet or flooring in the Orange County Register's 30th Annual Best of Orange County Reader's Choice Poll. And City Manager Kim will read that spotlight.
Madam Clerk, and good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council would like to recognize Rick and Christine Tessier, owner and operators of Colonial Carpet Company, for being named the best place to buy carpet or flooring in Orange County's Register's 30th Annual Best of Orange County Reader's Choice. Would Rick and Christine Tessier please come forward and just stand in the crowd? Come on. And I'll read the rest of your spotlight. Since 1955, family-owned and operated Colonial Carpet Company has served customers in Garden Grove and beyond. It has been a longtime local favorite and is known for its large selection of flooring options and in-house installation team. Customers can choose from thousands of samples of carpet rolls, remnants, vinyl, wood, laminate, stone, and tile. Rick, the second-generation owner, began working at Colonial Carpet Company with his father when he was 15 years old. His first memory of carpet store dates back to when he was three years old. Colonial Carpet Company has been consistently recognized as the best place to buy carpet and flooring in the Orange County Register's Best of Orange County Reader's Choice for the past 14 years. Their success and longevity are due to their commitment to exceptional customer service and quality installations. The Colonial Carpet Company, staff goes above and beyond to guide customers through the carpet and flooring installation process. The staff will help you from the selection of the products to the installation, so they manage your project along with you and take care of it from the beginning to the end, said Rick. To this day, Rick often hears from his customers that installation technicians are courteous and patient. People have said that it was a pleasure to have the guys working in our homes, Rick said, adding that they really, really do, they're just really nice people and we have, they're just really nice people that we have working for us. At this time, the mayor and City Council would like to present Rick and Christine Tessier with a certificate and a memento of recognition for being named the best place to buy carpet and flooring. Congratulations, and we wish them the very best in their endeavors. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Nice work.
So I just want to thank the city. We're honored that the Orange County has voted as best of OC 14 years in a row now. But we're especially honored to have our city recognize us. So thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. All righty. We'll open oral communications. Starting with Nicholas Dibbs. Oh, okay. We'll come back to him. Leland Sisk.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, and our hard-working city staff, about this time last year, I was northbound on 9th Street, from Garden Grove Boulevard up across Chapman to Marineway, where I live. Lived there almost 30 years, so I know the area pretty well. Happened to notice on 9th Street, north of Chapman, the speed limit said 40 miles an hour. I'm going, 40? When the heck did that happen? So I made a ULE, drove all the way up and down 9th Street from Cotella, back down to Chapman, all the way down to Garden Grove Boulevard. Still 35 miles an hour, except from Orange Wood down to Chapman. I thought, this is really strange. So I called traffic engineering and I spoke to someone named Vu. I understand there's two people there named Vu, and asked them what happened. They said that the city did a traffic study in 2019 and found out that 84% of the people on 9th Street were doing at least 45 miles an hour or more. So I asked them, did you turn this over to Garden Grove PD and ask them to enforce the law? And they said, nah, we can't do that. We got to increase the speed limit because if we issue a bunch of tickets, the people who got the tickets could go to court and say this is, in effect, a speed trap and it's discrimination. You can't do that. And it said, so we compromised on 40 miles an hour. We were thinking about raising it to 45. And I'm thinking, you gotta be kidding me. So, just so you know, the distance from 9th Street to Chapman Avenue is 1,987 feet, according to Dan. All right? And if you do it at the full 40 miles an hour, you save 4.83 seconds. But if you do it at 40 miles an hour, when you get to Chapman, and you want to go right, you can't because there's two signs that say no right on red. And even if you do get left or right on Chapman, speed limit's 40 there, too. You're not going any faster. But if you continue south on 9th, it's still 35. Or if you go the other way, north on 9th Street, when you get to Orange Wood, if you go east or west, or north, further north on 9th, you're slowing back down to 35. I don't understand this. If you're, increase your speed from 35 to 40, it increases your stopping distance by 55 feet. That doesn't sound like much unless you're a small child, or a dog, or a baby in a stroller, and we have large amounts of each in that area. So I'm asking the City of Garden Grove, lower that speed limit back to 35 because this is probably one of the less brainy, well, it's one of the stupidest things I've ever seen any city do. You can't keep the people from speeding, so let's just increase the speed limit so they don't get tickets. Come on, we can do better than that. Think of our fellow citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas Dibbs.
Mayor Jones, members of the council. My name is Nicholas Dibbs. I'd like to speak in favor of consent item 4A and thank the council and the city manager for getting us on the agenda. Proclamation of December 10th, Human Rights Day in Garden Grove was proclaimed on December the 11th, 1948, in the UN General Assembly. I want to say I'm a member of Jewish Voice for Peace. I encourage people to go to jewishvoiceforpeace.org, also democracynow.org, addictedtowar.com, and ifamericansnew.org. I want to say that every life is precious, and that's what this Declaration of Human Rights is about. So whether you're a Palestinian or an Israeli, or somebody from Garden Grove, or a police officer, like we just had today, the commemoration of the unfortunate death of Corporal Han Cho, all of our first responders, everyone, every life is precious. Every person is a child of God and is precious, and we have to do all we can for the cause of peace and justice. At the last meeting, I read the letter from Dr. Albert Einstein regarding the situation in Palestine, and he, his letter of April the 10th, 1948, if you, anybody watching wants to see it, they can, or read it, they can go back to the last meeting and hear what I read on that. I did not have enough time to finish the statement from Veterans for Peace dated October the 13th. Veterans for Peace statement. Veterans for Peace is an organization of former soldiers and allies who know too well the costs of war, the obvious visible wounds and unseen wounds that curse us and our families for generations, and the cost, cost to society of maintaining a military larger than the next 10 nations combined. Bitter experience taught us that war is insanity and suffering. We oppose all targeting of civilians. We denounce Hamas's attacks on Israeli civilians and deplore Israel's crushing response in Gaza. We also recognize this war did not start last week. It has gone on for decades. Over $150 billion of our tax dollars have provided Israel with unlimited weaponry and diplomatic cover, and has allowed it to expand its occupation, such that 16 years ago, former President Jimmy Carter clearly labeled it apartheid. Our government fans the flames beneath the pressure kosher of occupation, and our taxes make us complicit. We should not pretend shock at a violent response after Palestinian homes are destroyed to make way for Israeli settlers and Gaza's locked down year after year by a draconian air, sea, and land blockade since 2007. History is defined by when you start the clock. I'll skip part of this. The cycle of violence coupled with the reality that war is an uncontrollable force with its own agency and purposes results in the terrors we witness. Neither side has a military path for victory. Only a political process will dismantle the apartheid system, answer the grievances of the Palestinian people, create a democratic system that provides rights for all the people of Israel and Palestine, and finally bring lasting peace and security. Without that political process, the cycle of violence will magnify, dooming more generations of Israelis and Palestinians.
Thank you. Time's up.
So anyway, this declaration for human rights is very important, and I'm grateful that you put it on the agendas. Item 4A. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Tran.
Good evening, everyone. I don't know if this question is a suggestion. I don't know. Let's begin with the conversation. In February, we have the workshop about ADU, and I love that. That's very good. You got high and private company to study about what can we improve in ADU. I was talking in June or July last, last few months, we have the answer. But up to now, I came to land department, nobody know what happened. Not going, I don't know what going on with that study yet. I think that's a good idea because housing demand now is important. It happened everyone, every city. So Garden Grove is one of the city have the bigger lot than every city, over the 10,000 street lot. But the process to add for the split lot was so difficult. Also, in the parking lot, it was not issue. But when we add for two car lot, the city don't allow that. So I don't know why they answered it for that. Also, Garden Grove have more code enforcement than every city. Like, five, they only have one or two. Garden Grove have five or six. That's good. I like it, though. So, but I like to do is when you have the code enforcement, you have to study, what can you do with that? You should come up with an answer. If you take a look at the database on the map, more people violence and eat the fun job, right? They don't, they have a big lot, big job. So I don't know if city do the database to come up with a solution. How you come up to lose for that? Give you a more, build more car parking or something like that. But after now, if you take a look at the map, violation map, the rest over the city, everywhere. But 90% of time is the fun job problem. So can we make some adjustment for that? Make solution for that? We cannot just people take that and no solution. I don't think that makes sense, right? The red one. One more thing. I think the city want to speak of ADU, but one of process I disagree with is you submit the plan, but the city requires calculation. The whole package, one time, that's ridiculous to me. This should be planning approval, then building, that's a process. But the city now ask, we submit the whole package, calculation, planning, everything. What if the city died the plan? We have to go back beginning. But each time calculation costs a lot of money. You know, that doesn't make sense at all. Take to a cost money and timing. But I came out of fund, nobody have answer for that. I say, why you need the calculation when the plan not approved? I should know how many bedroom, how big I can build, how many garage, right? But the thing is, if you don't approve the plan, how can you do calculation for what? Doesn't make sense. Also, this is my suggestion. If council take a look at that process, and also come up some solution, come up solution to help the citizen build a quicker or more parking, and come solution for the, anyone have problem with the fun job, allow them to build more parking or something, you know, to help them, instead of just give them ticket. You know, we receive it all the time, same thing. Because we have big lot, 15,000 lot. The highway 1,000, so I have extra 14,000. It's a lot. But when we add for the split lot, it's not easy at all. Cost me $20,000 to submit the plan, but I don't know answer. Who went and bet 2,000? We don't have answer, right? Doesn't make sense. So please, council, take a look at that. Last thing, you know, I love city council, Garden Grove leadership. You do a lot improvement. I see the shirt better now, more, you know, on the Gilbert land, beautiful, a lot, beautiful thing happening in Garden Grove. I love that. Appreciate that, you know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last but not least, McCabe's mom. In soccer world.
Addison's mom. Addison.
Yeah, Addison's mom.
Only kids, shout out to the Pacifica kids that are here right now, because they're civics class, so they're taking notes. So Addison's at Pacifica. McCabe is with our mayor's kiddos at their school. So anyway, hi, I'm Jen Tacney, Jingle Jam representative. And thank you, Janet, for all your help, too, with the Jingle Jam and the whole city of Garden Grove. Super grateful. This is our ninth time having the Jingle Jam. I don't think you've gotten your invitation yet, but you are all formally invited to please join us at the Jingle Jam. I know you're swamped, December 8th. Do you like my attire, Cindy? That's why I'm just like, hey. Even, even, yeah, even my hands jingle. So we're super excited to have the Jingle Jam again at East Gate Park on December 8th, 5 to 9. And I was requesting, please, to take a vote to have some of the extra fees that are on there waived for us, because it does also benefit AYSO Region 59. It is a fundraiser, so we donate portion of the proceeds to them, and each food truck is writing checks directly payable to them. So that's it. I'm just asking you to waive some fees for me and to join us, everyone, please, at East Gate Park, 5 to 9, December 8th. That's all. I have a minute and 38 left. Are you guys stoked? Can I, can I, can I end early, or do you want me to just keep? I have a lot to say about the ADU and the lot lines, you know, Team Tacney, GMT Real Estate, we've got opinions on that. So, all right, thank you all so much.
Thanks. Anyone else wishing to speak on an item that's not listed on the agenda under all? Okay, great. Then we will conclude oral communications, and that takes us on to written communications. We do have two items listed, so item 3A.
Item 3A is consideration of a written request from the Sister City Association of Garden Grove for cosponsorship of the 2024 Strawberry Stomp 5K. And Ms. Palio is here to give that report.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The Sister City Association of Garden Grove is requesting that the City Council consider co-sponsoring the 2024 Strawberry Stomp 5K on Saturday, May 25th, 2024. The association is a local nonprofit organization that is in good standing with the IRS and has been serving the Garden Grove community since 1989. Each year, the association sends Garden Grove youth to our sister city, Onyang, South Korea. The association also hosts youth from Onyang, South Korea as part of the student exchange program. All proceeds from this fundraising event will go directly towards sending Garden Grove students overseas and hosting the incoming exchange students from Onyang, South Korea. The cost to provide police and public work support, including additional street closure hours for this event, has been estimated to be approximately $13,000. This cost is calculated based on two additional hours that are added to the existing street closure plans for the annual strawberry festival parade. The additional cost will be absorbed within the current department budget. Staff recommends that the City Council consider this request on behalf of the association. This concludes staff's report, and the association representatives are also here with us tonight and available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Any questions? Go ahead, Kim.
Does that mean that it's going to start earlier?
No, it's same hours.
That was the only question I had. I'll second it.
All right. We got a motion in a couple of seconds. Call the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All righty. Item 3B.
Item 3B is consideration of a written request from AYSO Region 59 to waive the city's showmobile stage rental fees for the 2023 Jingle Jam event. And again, Ms. Palio is here to give that report.
Thank you again, Mayor and members of the council. As Terry just mentioned, AYSO Region 59 is requesting that the City Council consider waiving the rental fees for use of the city's showmobile stage for the annual Jingle Jam event that will be hosted at East Gate Park on Friday, December 8th. Since 2017, AYSO Region 59 has been the sponsoring nonprofit organization for the annual Jingle Jam event. The community event is a free and festive night of holiday activities that include photos with Santa, train rides, stage performances from local groups and students, a vendor village, and craft activities. The group is a 501(c)(3) local organization that is in good standing with the IRS. Approval of this request will forego the revenue that would otherwise be collected for the rental of the city's showmobile stage, a total of $350. It is recommended that the City Council consider this request on behalf of AYSO Region 59. This concludes staff's report. And I'm available to answer any questions, as well as the representative here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you again, Janet. Go ahead, George.
Yeah. The Jingle Jam has become kind of an institution, not just in West Garden Grove, but the whole city. We get people from all over the city coming out there, and it's a really wonderful event. Thousands of people are there. And so, $350 waived fee, minimal for the amount of use that it's going to get publicly. So I would motion that we grant the item.
All righty. Motion is second. Call the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Righty. You're good. We're going to recess and conduct other agency business. We'll move on to successor agency. And I'll go ahead and open. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Member Bridigum.
Here.
Member Tran.
Here.
Member Dovin.
Present.
Member Klaffenstein.
Here.
Member Wen Pinalosa.
Here.
Vice Chair O'Neal.
Here.
And Chair Jones.
Here. We already did oral communications, consent calendar. Just receive and follow the minutes. Can I get a motion? Call the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Any matters from successor agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn and go to Sanitary District. I'll hand it over to President O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to open up the Garden Grove Sanitary District Board of Directors meeting for November 28th. The clerk could please call the roll.
Member Bridigum.
Here.
Member Dovin.
Present.
Member Klaffenstein.
Here.
Member Wen Pinalosa.
Here.
Member Jones.
Here.
Vice President Tran.
Here.
And President O'Neal.
Here. Thank you. We've already held oral communications simultaneously with council. At this time, we'll go to consent items. They'll be acted on simultaneously unless anybody wants to pull anything. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second.
Second on the consent items. Please call for the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Thank you. We do have one item for consideration tonight, and do we have a report on that? Looks like.
Yes, we do. Item 3A is award a contract to Tunnel Works Services, Inc., for Project CP 1330000, Sewer System Rehabilitation Plan Phase 1, Sewer Main Lining and Spot Repair Projects 5 and 6. And Mr. Murray is here to give that report.
Mr. Palmeroy, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Tonight, the board is being asked to award a contract to Tunnel Works Services Incorporated for sewer main lining and spot repairs in the area bounded to the east and west by Brookers Street and Nice Street, to the north and south by Chapman and Westminster. There's a location map attached to your staff report for your reference. In general, the work includes, but is not limited to sewer lining for about 17,000 linear feet of 8-inch diameter sewer line, about 300 linear feet of 10-inch diameter sewer line, and that's using fiberglass reinforced plastic cured-in-place reinforcement in the pipe. It's the lining of the pipe. The project will also include about 580 linear feet of 8-inch sewer spot repairs. We will build five new manholes, and we rehabilitate existing manholes, eight of them. All of the work has been identified as required because of the poor condition of the existing sewer lines in the area. All of this work is to be completed at a cost just under $1.8 million. Staff received and opened two bids on October 30th of this year and determined Tunnel Works Services Incorporated as the lowest responsible bidder for the project. Should the board decide to award the contract tonight, the contractor can begin work in January, and should be complete before school resumes in August of 2024. This project was included in this year's capital improvement plan and will be paid for with sewer funds. This concludes staff's report, and available should you have any questions.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions? Board Directors? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. We'll call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, thank you very much. Any matters from board members?
I do have one matter.
Go right ahead, George.
Yeah, just, you know, from some of the community chatter and social media posts and whatnot, on 2A of the consent, Lamson Springdale Sewer Improvement Project, there was some issue regarding a loose manhole cover in that, on that particular project. So, I voted that, you know, the project's done, but under the contract, we're still covered with a one-year warranty. So, I just wanna make sure that we get staff out there to take care of that manhole cover while it's still under warranty. So, just wanted to reiterate that.
Thank you for that. Good point. Any other matters? Seeing none, we'll adjourn until the next regular meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024, in this room. Back to council.
We'll reconvene City Council. That takes us on to consent calendar. Recommended the items 4A through 4E be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item.
Move to approve?
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Takes us on to public hearings. Item 5A.
Item 5A is the introduction and first reading of an ordinance enacting adjustments in water rates and charges and authorizing future automatic adjustments in water rates to account for adopted increases or decreases in wholesale charges. The city pays to other agencies for water. That ordinance is entitled, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, amending sections 141210, 141230, and 141250 of Chapter 1412 of Title 14, Water of the Municipal Code relating to Water Rates and Charges and Meter Failures. And Mr. Kim is here to give that report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy. Mr. Mayor and members of City Council, tonight, City Council is being asked to hold a public hearing and introduce for first reading and adoption for the ordinance authorizing adjustments in water rates and related charges, and also authorizing future automatic pass-through adjustments in water rates to account for adopted increases or decreases in wholesale water charges the city pays to other agencies. In March 2023, the city hired FG Solutions to develop a five-year water financial plan to study the water enterprise's financial condition and make recommendations for maintaining the financial stability to the water enterprise fund. The study and analysis show that required expenditure are projected to significantly exceed revenues. This will result in the city spending reserves to pay for capital replacement and improvement projects. Without the proposed adjustment in water rates and related charges, available reserves will be depleted within a couple of years. The current financial condition is causing the water enterprise to postpone and delay needed capital replacements and improvement projects. Revenue increases are also necessary to ensure that water enterprise meets its bond covenant. The study concludes that to properly maintain the system's aging infrastructure and enable the water enterprise fund to reach financial stability, rate adjustments are necessary. The water rate study has identified the overall revenue needs for minimal financing of the operations, capital improvements, and debt obligations for water enterprise through evaluating existing policies and procedures affecting water rates, evaluating adequacy of projected revenues on their existing rates to meet projected revenue requirements, and developing a sound financial plan for covering a five-year study for ongoing operations, planned capital improvements, and complying with the federal and state mandates. Also, developing a suitable schedule of water rates that produce revenues adequate to meet financial needs and business principles adopted by the City Council. The study concludes that additional funds are needed to meet the financial, regulatory, operational, public health and safety, and other obligations. The city is proposing the adoption of automatic annual adjustments to each water rate component as follows: minimum charge, capital improvement charge, commodity charge, and the fire service rate over a five-year period. The city is also proposing to readapt the automatic adjustments to the commodity delivery charge for water usage that pass through future increases or decreases in wholesale water charges for a five-year period. The total fee charged is calculated based on the funds required by the city to maintain and operate the city's water system, also repay bond indebtedness, and to comply with the new and existing regulations imposed by state and federal agencies. Now, I would like to direct your attention to the monitor for brief presentation on the proposed water rates to go over some numbers. This table shows the proposed increase on the minimum charges, bi-weekly minimum charges based on meter sizes. The most of residential customers have a 5/8 and 3/4 inch meters. So, if you look at the first line, the current charge is $33,085, and it will go up to $0.35 next year, and it will be $43,068 at the five-year mark. And this is the capital improvement charge portions of it, bi-monthly charge. So, if you look at the same meter size, currently, it's a $7, and it will go up to $745 next year, and at the five-year mark, it will be $9.20. And then, proposed commodity delivery charge, currently, $3.26 for the first year, and next year, it will be $3.40, and at the five-year mark, it will be $4.27. And then, this table shows the proposed private fire service rate for the customer who has a separate fire service lines. So, this will be the one who has the separate fire service lines for private fire hydrant or the sprinklers. And this table shows the proposed water rate for average single-family residents using about 2,200 cubic feet bi-monthly. As you can see, currently, it's $112,057, and it will go up to $117,34, about 4.2% increase next year, and at the five-year mark, it will be $146,081. And this is the example of a 50-unit apartment complex with the 3-inch meter, assuming that each apartment unit using around 1,800 cubic feet bi-monthly. So, it's currently about $3,819, and it will go up to $4,114 next year, and at the five-year mark, it's gonna be $5,002. Next one is the commercial property with a 2-inch meter, assuming using around 100 cubic feet bi-monthly. Current charge is $1,797, and it will go up to $1,886 next year, and at the five-year mark, it will be $2,386. And this is the, kind of showing the comparison of our proposed water rates comparing with neighboring utilities. Ours is shown in the black, and it's sitting in mid-pack. So, we're in the mid-pack if we compare it with other utilities around us. Now, I would like to continue with my report. These water rate components would be adjusted after the next regularly scheduled mirror reading, following the date on which the city's ordinance establishing the rates becoming effective on January 11th, 2024. Subsequent rate increases will become effective on January 1st of each year, starting January 1st, 2025, without further action by the City Council. However, a 30-day notice will be provided to each customer per to each increase for commodity charge. To continue with the water rate adjustments, the City Council must hold a public hearing on the matter, and also consider written protests from ratepayers, vote on the ordinance, hold second reading of ordinance in the future, and then finally, staff implements the rate adjustment with the approval of City Council. This concludes the staff report. Staff is here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, this is a public hearing. We'll open. I do have a card, but any clarification questions to start? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. I do have one card from Jim Huysington.
Good evening, sir. Good evening. Going back to the late '50s, my parents had a farm over here between Garden Grove Boulevard Beach, which used to be Highway 39, Lamson, and Western. Used to have well water back then, and we had a full water table at all times. It used to be all open fields, and when we'd irrigate, all the water would come out and go in, water the vegetables or whatever were grown at the time, go back into the ground and, and keep everything where it's supposed to be. Now, you go in that area, it's all concrete and asphalt, and I, you know, the city keeps pushing for these ADUs for any, any property that might be available, you know, have water going back in the ground. And then, they're pushing the ADUs with the low interest rates, and I think that's wrong. We heard last week at some meeting that they have, California is pushing to put 19,000 open doors here in Garden Grove for this year. When they're doing that, the city's making a lot of money with their permits and stuff. Why doesn't the water company go after the city and have them pay the extra money that they have to pay for water coming to and from Garden Grove? Folks that are on a fixed income like myself, you know, it doesn't sound much, $3 or $2 or whatever it might be, but you know, you add that up with all your other things like gas and water or fuel, anything, you know, it gets a little much after a while. So, anyway, and then they paid this extra money to this consultant for five years. That probably cost them a few thousand dollars here and there. So, you know, I just, also on these ADU things, you know, some of these folks have, I mean, I have a house right down the street from us that have 13 people living in one house. It's a three-bedroom home, well, it's supposed to be a three-bedroom, and they've added on a few things. But, back when my friend wanted to add on to his garage about eight years ago, they told him he couldn't do it because it had to have 50% dirt, 50% concrete. Well, since then, people next door to him put a bay DU on, and it's taken up the whole property. Some of these mansions you see, they don't have five feet around the whole house, you know, and then, so, then there's no water available to go into the ground. So, I think, you know, there's no way out of it. You're gonna get a raise. You gotta pump the water in from somewhere, but, you know, I just thought I'd share my little feelings here and see what you guys do appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on 5A?
Mayor Jones, members of the council, my name's Nicholas Dibbs. I just wanna echo what the previous speaker said a little bit, and that is that there is a relationship between the amount of paving and buildings you put over top of the soil versus the percolation and recharge of the groundwater. And so, I think it is important, I'll just mention this because it was brought up by the previous speaker, that we should consider keeping the garden in Garden Grove by allowing ADUs for those that wanna do it to build it on the second floor so that we don't, we don't expand the footprint of the buildings. The other thing that can be done is, I believe, and Bill can probably correct me if I'm wrong, but there's porous concrete and asphalt materials so that when it rains, the water can percolate down into the soil. So, whatever can be done in that regard on these developments and so on, we, we are a town and a city of, it used to be farms, and what, we need to preserve our soil, the space we have. So, I advocate for two-story ADUs in that regard, and porous materials on your construction projects and developments to allow more percolation of rainwater. Now, with regard to this, I wanna thank, I'm here with a smile, actually. I wanna thank Mr. Bill Murray for answering my questions that I've had on this, some things I had on this report. I've reviewed it. I think it's something necessary that you have to do, and the challenge of protecting our groundwater from the PFOS and from other things, and the, and the, and the, what they call the pass-through charges. So, the, I'm glad that we're continuing the senior, that you're continuing the senior care discount program to, to, at least keeping it going, and so I support this, and I do wanna say to our students in the back of the room, water is very fascinating, and our water coming from the state water project, from the Colorado River Aqueduct, and from our groundwater sources and reclaimed water. It's a field that I got into in high school, and as, when I did a science project and had an award from Municipal Water District of Orange County as a high school kid. So, I've been studying this water stuff for a while. Worked for DWR, Department of Water Resources, for over eight years, and now I'm qualified to teach water operations to high school kids. So, as a CTE teacher, career technical education. So, this is a fascinating field. I encourage the students in the back to look into the water, how water resources work, where our water comes from, and the wonderful careers that people can, and those watching, wonderful careers for young people to get into. But we do need to do more to protect our groundwater, and please consider the ADU option for second stories. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on 5A? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Colleagues? Kim?
Before you, before you go into that, can I go ahead and make the announcement on the protests that we received?
Please.
Thank you. So, the city has received 34 written protests, and with the last equalized assessment rule of Orange County totaling 37,600 parcels, and as the number of water service accounts totaled 34,689, there is not a majority protest. Thank you.
Kim?
I was gonna just chime in to say that no one on this dais takes increasing fee charges lightly. It's something that we don't like to do, but we have a fiduciary duty to the city and to the residents to be able to provide you with the service, and these costs come at a financial disadvantage to the city because we're paying much more for water than what's coming in from the residents to mitigate that cost, and we don't have the financial capability of, of withstanding that increased cost every single year, and that's what results in an increase in fees. I just wanted to highlight that for those who are of particular requirements will qualify for our senior care discount, and that can be found in our agenda packet if you go to the website on page 158 of 270. It requires that the person lives at the billing address, that they must be a resident. It requires that the person lives at the billing address, that they must be a resident, that the bill must be under the resident's name, that they're 65 years or older, and they're enrolled in SoCal Edison's Care Program. So there are multiple discounts that you can qualify for if you're on a fixed income and need that extra assistance. While I know that that's not much, and it's still a burden, these programs are available to you, so I urge the community to enroll in those programs and make sure that you're receiving the benefits that are afforded to you through these programs and these agencies. And with that, I'd make the motion to approve the item.
I'll second it, and I also wanted to say, yeah, I totally concur with Councilwoman Duane Penalosa. No one likes to raise costs. Basically, in simple terms, you're paying about, right now, about $3.26 for 748 cubic feet of water. So it's a lot of water. It's going up 14 cents per unit for 100 cubic feet. It's not pleasant, but what this does is, like Councilwoman said, this is gonna stabilize our water department for the next five years to make us able to do all the things that we need to do to get folks clean fresh water. It's not fun. The only question I have, that I, the only thing that rubs me a little bit wrong way, and maybe staff could help me on this, what's the science between, with the tier two being so much different than tier one? I realize we have to watch what we're using. Is it more of a penalty thing, or is there a science to figuring out the difference between tier one and tier two?
Hello, Councilmember O'Neil. This is Art Group FFFG Solutions, and the tiers, the costs in the tiers are based on the water supply source. So the city gets water from its local groundwater sources, and about 15% of it is from the state water project. So tier one, which is what most of your residents pay, is based on the cost of groundwater only. The imported water is more expensive, and so tier two folds in both the groundwater and the imported water costs.
So a simple way of saying that is, the majority of the folks are gonna be within the tier one?
That is correct.
And then, okay, I got it. Yeah, thank you very much. So yeah, just keep in mind, you know, $3.26, well, three, it'd be $3.40 for 750 gallons. I like to look at it that way, you know, and as far as, and the other charges are just to keep the infrastructure going, so that's why I seconded the motion. Thank you.
Yeah, I echoed the sentiments. Nobody wants to raise fees, and you know, sometimes you have to. I know we're not in it to make money. This is a, I think we're supposed to try to break even. That's the whole goal. But you know, this seems like a huge increase to me, more than maybe necessary, I don't know. Both the water rate studies that we participated in, I asked the question, you know, this seems, and I was told, this is a very conservative estimate, very conservative, you know, it might rain more years, or it might be dry more years, and you know, my experience with taxes is once, once fees and taxes go up, if they find that maybe they're a little higher than they need to be, it never goes back to the taxpayer. It never does. They find some other way to spend the money, some other way to, you know, oh, we can do this with the pipeline, or we can do this, you know. You know, I know we need to raise rates, but I'm, I'm a no vote on this. I'm a no vote. I think it's too much. I think we're raising the rates too much. It's too conservative, and for those reasons, I'm gonna be voting no on this item.
Thank you, Protem Bridigam. I think we sat through the same reviews and got the same data, and this is a bit of a bitter pill to swallow, but I think we'll be healthier and better for it, and I can see the other cities have to raise their rates too, and it's gonna be a lot more than ours. So I think we've mitigated as much as we can, and we're gonna come out of this stronger. I've read all the objections. We all got that ahead of our meeting tonight, and it really pains me. We've spent time and money on a consultant to get us the best possible outcome, so some of the criticism was directed at our consultant. I've read that. And it's a bit unfair, because I know they do their job very well, and we got a very good advice from them, so I'm gonna go with the recommendation, and I think in the long run, we'll be better for it, and I want that five years of stability, and we'll come out of it stronger. So I'm gonna vote it up. Thank you.
Yeah, so just a quick note, we all attend the water rate review and meeting previously. Not just that, I also went to the Orange County District Water Meeting. I went there, and just curious to see, you know, what can we do and why is it going up? A lot of people say, oh, we have so much rain, and you know, we have more water, but that's just like, none of that would matter, just because this, you know, there's all the costs to it. And so listened to all the council member here speaking, and I agree with council, with Mayor Protem George about the cost seemed like a lot, because it may be on the percentage, but hearing from all the council member this side, yes, we need to do that to be able to get better. And so my vote's gonna be yes, even though I do not want to see, you know, the rate to go up, but I don't think that we have any other choice. So thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Motion, motion received, six yes votes, with Mayor Protem Bridigam voting no.
Thank you, all you guys, for your work effort on that. Oh, cool. Yeah. I was sort of just pausing to let people clear out of the room, but then Cindy bolted too. Yeah. We'll give her a minute. Actually, I guess we could go ahead and go. So we have no items. Ordinance is presented for a second reading and adoption, and I know Terry likes to read all these. We'll go ahead on 7A.
We're not gonna wait for Cindy?
No, we'll go ahead and do it.
Okay. Item 7A is the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2945 entitled, "An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, Amending Chapter 644 of Title VI of the Garden Grove Municipal Code pertaining to Regulation of the Sale of Tobacco Products."
Okay, this is a second reading. Can I get a motion and a second?
Yeah, I'll move it.
Call the vote.
Did I not do it? Okay, try it again.
Does it mess things up that Cindy's not?
Okay, the motion was received, six yes votes, with Councilmember Tran absent.
All right, item 7B.
Item 7B is second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2946 entitled, "An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, Approving a Zoning Text Amendment to Chapter 952 of Title IX of the Garden Grove Municipal Code pertaining to Retail Sale by Delivery of Medicinal Cannabis."
All right, second reading. Can I get a motion and a second? I'll move it.
I'll second.
And takes us on to...
Okay, motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay. 7C.
Item 7C is the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2947, "An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, Approving Amendment Number A382023B, A Zoning Text Amendment to Portions of Chapters 98, 912, 916, and 918 of Title IX of the City of Garden Grove Municipal Code Establishing Enhanced Standards for the Screening of Mechanical Equipment Within an Exterior Equipment. Enclosure in Residential Zones Clarifying How the Maximum Permitted Hardscape Coverage in the Front Yard Set Back in Residential, Commercial, Industrial, and Open Space Zones Is Calculated, and Updating the Standards for Artificial Turf in All Zones."
Thank you. Motion, second?
I'll second.
I'll to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All righty, that takes us on to matters. We'll go around, we don't have anything listed, so we'll just go around the horn. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, only one, really, and it was earlier we voted, and I want to thank you guys for supporting the Showmobile for the Jingle Jam, December 8th, 6:30 PM. Be there or be square. It's a really fun event. Santa will be there, all kinds of vendors and whatnot, and I just want to thank the Tacneys for putting us on every year, and hope to see everybody there at Jingle Jam.
I got a few things. One of the speakers had talked about ADUs, and I just want to commend staff on what they've done over the last number of years. It's been years. Most of this council went through years of planning for adapting to the state law. They've done an outstanding job. We have more ADU permits currently outstanding or completed than any other city in the county, or in the state, probably. We are the capital of it, and city has managed it very well, the staff, thousands of permits for ADUs, and this council did a great job, I believe, in setting up the parameters for the structure of how that's permitted and inspected and done. It is very challenging on a day-to-day basis for the staff to keep up with what's going on, and I commend them because they're doing a good job doing it. I sit on a county seat that has to do with this development, and no one else is near what we're doing, and they're amazed at what we can do, but yet we've been able to do it the right way, and you know, it is a big change. I've been here my whole life, and it's hard to see the change, but it's, to provide the housing for as many people as here, it has to be done. But this council set up a very good procedure to do that, so thank you very much for that. Also want to commend Public Works for what they've done, and some of the, I'm sure in all the districts, but I've noticed it specifically in District 2, is the alleyways are getting paved. You know, some of those, I think, hadn't been done in 30 or 40, 50 years, it seems like. So great job doing that. Some of the park work, I know Magnolia Parks were getting, under construction, getting that redone for the playground and the adult equipment for exercising, so that's very good. The water rate study, very lengthy process, happens every five years. It's painful to go through, but if you have to understand that we don't make water, we buy water. City of Garden Grove buys water for those 37,000 or 34,000 households, almost 35,000 households. We buy water, and that's, that price comes from MODOC, or it comes from the Orange County Water District, and we have to pay for that water. So to be, you know, solvent in that, we have to charge the appropriate rate, and we have to project five years out, you know, what it's gonna take to do that. So it's still one of our lowest costing necessities or utilities that we have next to the trash is probably one of the lowest, and we actually reduced your bill on residential customers for your residential bill for the trash. And you know, water, we have, we're at the mercy of our aquifer, at the condition of our aquifer, and we're at the mercy of what's going on in Northern California. So keep that in mind, and city's doing a great job managing the water that we do have. We have our own water department to pump that water. So a lot of cities don't, are relying on a lot of other folks to do that. Let's see, oh, I always say this during getting close to Christmas, please check, you know, your smoke detectors. When you're wiring things up, those extension cords, make sure they're in good shape, because a frayed cord, you know, I think you saw in District 1, we had that lithium battery, you're just charging a battery on your workbench, and if it's plugged in and it's charging and you leave it sitting there, there is a possibility that somebody could malfunction, short out, and cause a fire, and those lithium batteries explode when they get hot. So unplug the chargers, when you're done charging the battery, try to pull the battery out of the charger, and then get those smoke detectors changed, batteries changed. And also, what was, I thought was great was the, you know, I have security cameras at my house. I think everybody nowadays with Ring and all these different cameras, they're great for security, but they're also good when you're away from your home to watch your animals, your garage, your, you know, what's going on at my house. I have a motion, or there's a, all of a sudden, there's a fire in my garage, and they were able to get that out pretty quickly, the OCFA, so that was pretty great. And other than that, this weekend, they have the tree lighting ceremony at the park. I think it starts around 5 o'clock or somewhere like that, so I'm sure somebody will mention it. But anyway, I hope everybody stays safe out there. We'll see you next time.
Cindy?
Yes, sir. Three quick things. Well, the first one about the water rate that, you know, we've been talking about, I was so, I didn't want to, you know, vote in something that our residents have to pay more, right? And I think the council member here feel the same way, and that's why I even went to like different meetings and just tried to see, learning more about it, to see, is there anything else that our city could do just to avoid that or not going up so much on the cost, like, you know, the mayor pro tem mentioned. And after going through all the conversation and the discussion, like, I have to vote yes on that. So that's the first one. Second thing is about the Christmas. I know that when I first joined the council member, I mentioned about, I would like to see if we could do a voting where that kind of promote more lighting in our city, so whoever had a have like the beautiful light for Christmas, we would do some kind of, you know, maybe voting, or just get the best vote and give them some type recognition, just so promote more lighting in our city. And I did talk to staff a couple times. I know that they said that they were gonna do something. I'm not sure what's gonna happen, but hopefully there will be something to promote and encourage our residents to have more light and make, you know, more kind of put people in the season mood, right? Yeah, the spirit, you know, the spirits. And the last but not least, at the last council meeting, one of the residents came up and talked about the event coming up, that we're gonna do 30,000 meals for the hunger, and that's gonna be December 9th, from 9 to 11, only two hour. And I just want to remind our council here, hopefully you guys will come to support, do something for the less fortunate, but also want to extend that invitation to our residents. If anyone have time, you could bring kids, grandparents, anyone could come and join, just try to do something good, and you know, makes, kind of help other people to enjoy the holiday spirit with us too. That's it for me. Thank you.
Joe?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. First off, I want to appreciate the Leland, Mr. Sisk, for speaking to the speed limit there. I agree it should be 35, so I would like city manager Lisa Kim to please direct the traffic division and our engineers there to see if that's something we could be, make more consistent at 35 versus the 40. I don't buy into handing out tickets to try to, or handing out less tickets, and that doesn't justify raising the speed limit. So I'm with you there, even though it's like, just a short stretch, it should be, that whole stretch should be at 35. So I agree with that, and I appreciate all the texts and update we gave from our chief, El Farah, and half the time, it's about traffic accidents, and very tragically, we've had fatalities in and around our city, and it pains me to have to read these texts, and I'm reminding all the residents, be really careful. And so whatever we can do to make the roads safer, because we don't want these very serious accidents and oftentimes fatalities, and the only way to prevent is to slow down and to react in time. So I want to remind all the residents that. It's a, it's a very serious issue. I have a short list of things, but I'll start with the water rate, and we went through several reviews, and this round, I vote up, but I'm, I'm very conservative, and I agree with George. I just think that it's a, it's a, it's a very difficult times for us. Have anybody's ever gotten a red tag at their front door because you didn't pay your water bill? You know what I'm talking about, and I'm one of those people. I do get those from time to time, when I skip a pavement, and you'll get that, that red tag on your door. It's very shocking, and then you have to bring it down to City Hall and pay on it. And, and so I know that even though we didn't get a majority of opposition, every single voice and every single feedback counts, and I read them all. And I know some of the people who wrote to us, and they're good business operators, they're good residents, and they're, they're giving us good feedback, but we're doing everything we can to keep the rates low, so I want the residents to know that. One speaker today I want to particularly mention also is Mike Trun, who came in and speak to the ADUs, and how we need some clarity on what our city ordinance is, and how we have adopted it. The assembly bills that has come down, the senate bills that have come down, eight, nine, 10, and so on, I don't remember all the numbers, but eventually, our department, and I'm talking about the econ development, economic and community development department, which we have Nikki, who's, has just come on and hit the ground running, and our deputy now, Chief Building Officer Dave Dent, they have a lot of work to try to boil it all down and get that information out. And I'm very proud of our IT department. I put together the GG, or Garden Grove application. I remind people, you go ahead and go up and download the GG app, you can look onto the GG Ready and the Building Department tab, and you will get a lot of announcements and information from there, and that will help tremendously when people are trying to navigate the permitting application process to get your, your building permit, including the ADUs. But I agree with the speaker, Mr. Mike Trun there, because we do have to clarify and change the process of receiving the application, including the plans. I don't like the idea of lumping everything together either. It should be breaking, broken down to Planning Department, Building Department, and then the needs as they go along, because some people don't follow through with the whole process. They don't want to pay all that money upfront. They have to be able to budget and break it down in parts. So I'd like our city manager to talk to our economic and community development, particularly building and planning, so that we don't require that of people, to put everything in all at once, and then parse it out, and they have a lot of upfront costs. They don't, they don't necessarily go through the whole process at once. So break it down in pieces, so it's easier for people to submit, and it gives our staff the time to review. And then we have to subcontract out some of our plan reviews, so I'm letting our residents know that if the plans are not being reviewed as fast as you'd like, it's because we're implementing cost-saving measures, we're understaffed, and we have to subcontract out those plan reviews. And that takes some time to implement, so please be patient with the process and continue to come and give feedback, which is very useful. Lastly, I'd like to invite everybody, I know we are here, and my favorite event of the year is the Christmas tree lighting. I almost forgot to book myself for that, but December 2nd, Saturday, again, daylight savings time, so it gets dark very early, at 4:45, the events start, and we'd like to have everybody there by 5 o'clock or 5:45. So that's, again, when I was spouse to council member, that was my favorite event, to show up and just touch that button. I don't know if I get to touch it, but, but that's, that's a really fun thing, and have our group pictures, and wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy Holiday. So lastly, I want to congratulate myself a little bit, and Cindy, the new council member, for surviving the year, our first year, with the help of our colleagues and our mayor and Protem. So congratulations, Cindy, and I'll congratulate myself, and hopefully, I'll stick around for the rest of the term, and I promise that I'll, I'll do my best like I did this year, and I won't be running for mayor, so nobody needs to campaign against me this time. Thank you.
I'll be quick. Bane of my existence, Harbor and Trask, the saga continues. We are, I'm getting a significant amount of complaints from students, from residents, from businesses regarding the homeless, defecating, walking around, partially nude, and let's not forget the assault that occurred, occurred a few weeks ago. So I'd really appreciate if the city staff could work with GGPD and potentially the Garden Grove Unified School District to host a safety event at Santiago High School, or wherever else the city's teams fit, but I think that it's very appropriate. My biggest concern is that when incidents like this happen, that our residents and students and others are not aware of what they should do in response to such an incident, and so I want to make sure that the community is prepared, safe, and able to address this, because this will definitely have long-lasting effects on those involved. Also, Clinton and Roxy along Westminster, the Enterprise, constant graffiti, as well as the liquor store, all the electrical boxes, all the way down to Harbor and Westminster, near Tribute Coffee. There was folks setting up kind of like makeshift homes right by that electrical box that I know that I let staff be aware of, but that's, you know, not only a safety hazard, but also causing side effects to the businesses for folks wanting to go in and spend their money, and they already have a hard enough time. And it's our only black-owned business in Garden Grove, or second, I think, now, but I want to make sure that we do what we can to ensure that they're able to thrive. I will be attending the Cal City State Board meeting later this week, and I want to make sure that all of my colleagues receive the invitation for December 7th at San Juan Copper General Mission for our annual holiday event, and hope that you will be there. I always end up going by myself, so if someone from staff could please attend, and one or two of my colleagues, I'd be forever grateful. No one came when I was president, except for Scott, so I'm going to shame you all into trying to show up. It starts at 5, and I believe it runs until 7 PM. That's all for me, Mayor.
City manager, Lisa Kim.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate the feedback relating to ADU, the traffic, speed limit. We'll certainly look into that, and thank you, council member, Wynn Penalozza. We will look into those items relating to Harbor Trask. I do want to clarify, I also enjoy the holiday tree lighting event on December 2nd. It's on this Saturday, Winter in the Grove, the official name of the event, and it starts at 3:00. So, so to our community, it goes from 3:00 to 7:00 at the Village Green, and there'll be song, dance performances from local schools and performers, holiday crafts, inflatable, and snow. So definitely look forward to seeing everyone this Saturday. Thank you, Mayor.
Tree lighting's at 4:45, though, or 5:15, something like that.
It's earlier, though, because it's getting darker.
Yeah, but they are opening it up so the kids can play, and then they do the tree lighting when it starts to get dark a little bit, so.
General counsel, any need for a closed session or anything to report out?
Oh, nothing from legal. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you all for attending tonight, and with that, we will stand adjourned. Thanks.